Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, March 7, 2016, 7:00 PM. And the city council chambers will come to order. We welcome the Reverend Gene Riddle of the New Oak Hill General Baptist Church for the invocation. Will you stand, please?
I appreciate the honor to be here tonight. And, you know, as the word teaches us that all things that we do should be done in an orderly manner. And we pray tonight that the Lord will just let everything be done the way that it should be done and handled the way it should be handled. Let us bow our heads. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, oh God, we call tonight, dear Lord, for your leadings and your guidance upon each and every one that speaks tonight, these that's on the council tonight. Lord, I pray that you will guide them and give them the words to speak, these that's bringing up things tonight, dear God. And I just pray that you will just lead and guide and direct them in a manner that everything can be understood and the facts and the way that they should be and everybody can, everything can be done in a great orderly fashion. We thank you so much for your word. And, Lord, we do thank you for our city that we live in and that we well respect. And we just appreciate you so much. But without you in our lives and, and in order to do things, dear heavenly Father, Lord, we need your strength and your advice and your leadings and your guidance. Direct us now, Lord, as we come before you. Be our ears and our minds and our mouth to speak in the way that you would want us to speak and perform, that we can do all things in a godly fashion. And we do this by giving you the praise, the honor, and the glory. In Jesus' wonderful name we do pray. Amen, and thank you, Lord.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Riddle. We appreciate you being here. Roll call, please.
Councilman DeGaris?
Here.
Councilman Crocker?
Councilman Tinsley?
Here.
Councilwoman Fox?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Abshire?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, we will move to citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none, we will move to workshop required items. Item A, the city council will review a proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county for the paving of Thomas Street. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, we're working on these, Thomas Street and South 11th Street with MoDOT using STP funds to pave those two projects. Thomas Street, part of that is in the city. The tail end of it's kind of in the county. And MoDOT has requested that we do an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city so we can proceed with this project.
Any comments or questions from the council or the audience?
How soon does that have to be done?
They acted like it needed to be done pretty quick so we could get going on the project.
You want to vote it tonight, or you want to...
It's, it's on the voting session for tonight.
Make a motion, we move it to the voting session tonight?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move agenda item A to the voting session tonight. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item B, the city council will discuss accepting Southern Way and One Financial Place as city streets. Mr. Massingham.
Yeah, see, these are the streets beside Southern Bank. They actually came to us several months ago and wanted us to accept them. And we didn't want to do it at the time because they were still doing a lot of construction. We wanted to make sure their equipment weren't going to tear up the streets before we accepted them. Dennis Kirby, the street superintendent, has been out to inspect them. And they're in really good shape and meet city standards. So I'm just recommending that we accept them as city streets.
Make a motion and move that item to the voting session, the 21st?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move agenda item B to the voting session for March 21st. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item C, the city council will review a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a request for a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window to sell food and non-alcoholic beverages in a C-2 general commercial district. The property is located at 337 Southwestwood Boulevard, and the applicant is Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, Panda Express Restaurant, in care of civil engineering services, Ray Flake, 7705 Spicer Farm Lane, Fairview, Tennessee. Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you stated, Panda Express Restaurant is the intended tenant for this location. The property is owned by Walmart. Mr. Flake is in the audience tonight to answer any questions. I might not be able to. This is a C-2 general commercial district. It's going to be, for the ones of you that haven't seen the site, it's going to be in the area where the First Midwest ATM is present or has been for the past several years. It is vacant, other than the ATM, which is going away, obviously. Surrounding land use to the north, south, east, and west is C-2 general commercial, and it has been that since it was owned at C-2 in 1972. Comprehensive plan calls for commercial use in this area. Utilities are available to the site. It would be accessed from Southwestwood at the entrance to Walmart. Police and fire protection is available, Fire Station Number One being the first responder. As the mayor stated, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window in order to sell food and non-alcoholic beverages. Proposed drive-through route will be on the north and east side of the proposed building and can be accessed from Walmart's main entrance. The applicant can provide adequate traffic stacking on-site for the drive-through window. And there is plenty of parking for the, for the restaurant, sit-down restaurant, and the drive-through. Questions for me?
This will just be off the, won't be any interest off the highway then?
No, sir.
Come from the old, the Walmart.
Right, right. And, and since the land is held by Walmart, that's an appropriate way to do it and get them off of the state right-ofways, state highways, so that we don't create a traffic issue out on public property.
Planning and zoning recommended this?
They did. And the staff, staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the conditional use permit for a drive-through window with the following stipulations. No alcoholic beverages to be sold through the drive-through window. And the conditional use permit would go with the business owner. If ownership changes, the new owner would have to apply for a conditional use permit to continue the drive-through use. And as I stated, Mr. Flake, with the engineering firm, is here tonight, civil engineering firm, is here tonight, if you had other questions beyond that. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the council or from the audience?
Need to move it to the 21st?
Second.
Motion's been, been made and seconded to move item C to the voting session, March 21st. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item D, the city council will discuss a proposed ordinance adopting the International Fire Code, IFC 2012 edition, and making changes to the city code of ordinance as section 550 entitled "Fire Code." Chief Stucker.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, last year, the building inspections department updated the building codes to 2012, and we're trying to bring the fire codes up to be in line with them.
Ours are 2010 right now?
Sir?
Ours are 2010.
Building code is 2012 and fire code is 2000.
Okay. Oh, so we're off on that.
Yeah.
I was reading in this correctly, but it has near, fire protection permits will be required for fire sprinklers, fire alarms, and commercial cooking hoods. Now, on the fire sprinkler, is that commercial or is that both residential and commercial?
It's a, a commercial.
Okay.
Residential, no one in town has ever looked at putting one of them in. We'd be more than happy to work with anybody, but this is all commercial.
Right now, from my understanding, it takes a plumbing permit to do this?
Yes, sir. And that's what's caused the problem with the hospital project and Menards' project. When they come in, this is in the plumbing code, it has to be a master plumber pull the permit. The people that put in sprinkler systems do not, are not plumbers. They, they, the plumbers will bring it in, stub it into the building. They go from that point on. And this has caused a little bit of a problem with some of the projects we've had.
Okay, and reading this, eliminate the plumbing permit. Plumbers still have to bring the water to the building or to the sprinkler?
Yes, sir. Yeah. They will, they will tap the line and they will bring it in and stub it into the building.
And then they can, don't have to have a plumber's permit. Was there a part of the work?
Yes, sir. Yeah, this has, this has been a little bit of an issue on a couple of project, big projects we've had in town.
So we've actually had a permit on that before, but it's just changing it?
Yes.
From the plumbers to the sprinklers?
Yes.
Do they have some kind of licensing? Aren't they pipe fitters or something?
There's a pipe fitter, there's a pipe fitter group. When the hospital was being built, we was actually talking to the group in St. Louis on the pipe fitters because the contractor that came up here was out of Texas and we had issues with him. So we was talking to the pipe fitter group up in St. Louis to help work through some of them issues. We have three sprinkler companies in this area, Harrison, High Tech, and Premier. They're in Sykesville, Scott City, and I believe Kentucky. Then, then the next nearest one's going to be St. Louis.
Okay, so this will actually eliminate some of the problems?
Yes.
Correct them?
Yes.
So that the fire sprinkler systems will, will have to pull the permit?
Yes. They'll pull, they'll pull the permit, if anything.
Will that go through your department or through?
Well, if, if everything works right, I'd like to stay, leave everything in the inspections department where contractors come in, they go to one location and not have to go to several. That will make it a lot more efficient for them.
And then you'll help get forms for that?
Yes.
On the commercial cooking hood, it does, the old fire codes that have any permits with that, or is this going to be new?
This will be new. Right now, all the, all that comes out of the mechanical code. But we have had several people that's tried to put in hoods in town that once we come up there to do the inspection, the hood wasn't adequate. And it's caused some, some problems for the business owners. So we would like to be able to get on that upfront and make sure that that doesn't happen.
So then the hood, people?
Yes.
Will have to apply for a permit for that. Now, will you do the inspection?
Us and the inspections department do it, yes.
What about the fire sprinkler system?
Same way, the inspections department, we do that.
That answers my question of just, you know, some people want to know why we have so many permits. And it's actually for their own protection.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
I wanted to address this question about, about the permits and how they would run. Chief Stucker and I, and actually yourself, we're talking a little bit this afternoon. And once they get their, their code aligned, they're going to work on a permit format, and we will work on that to get that within our system so that we're concise in dealing with the people so that they will know what the expectations are. And we probably will have to make some minor changes in our permit code things to allow for the, the charge that would be put on it. It'd be reasonable, probably in the range of $15, which is not really much when we're sending people out to inspect. But we want to see that it's put in properly. And we actually think it'll save time and trouble in the long run. That's part of why we want to do it. And, you know, and it gives more protection to the commercial, or commercial industrial and institutional locations that we'd be working with.
And they'll know what to expect.
They will, they will. So.
Rules of follow. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the audience?
I make a motion, we move this to the voting session?
Second.
It'll be on the 21st?
Motion's been made and seconded to move agenda item D to the voting session for March 21st. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item E, the city council will review a request for the mayor to execute a letter of endorsement for Medic One Ambulance Service, LLC. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, Madam Mayor. We received a application for ambulance service from Medic One out of Jonesboro, Arkansas. After talking to a couple of council members this afternoon, it sounds like maybe they'd like to have some more information. Mr. Kibler is here with Medic One. If you'd like to ask him some questions tonight, I'll just kind of open the floor up, I guess, for discussion, so.
Thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight.
Sir, could you state your name and address?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Ryan Kibler, president of Medic One Ambulance Service, located at 6,007 Dalton Farmer Drive, Jonesboro, Arkansas, 72404.
Thank you.
To tell you a little bit about our company, if you'd like some background, we established in 1101. We currently do about 30,000 to 35,000 ALS ambulance runs a year. We currently operate in Arkansas, southeast Missouri. We have, we have Pembacote, Dunkland County. So as we expand our footprint, it makes sense to reach out to you from a mutual aid perspective, natural disaster perspective, because then all our service areas we'll touch. If you have any questions, I would be happy to field them at this time.
When did we receive this request?
It's dated January 28th. I'm not sure when the city clerk's office received it.
Do you have a address that you're looking at in Poplar Bluff?
Well, the first step here is to, you know, get approval and the blessing from y'all. And then if we get to go to the next step, what we will do, we will do some statistical analysis and locate our bases in the, in the town based on a PIN study. And hopefully, we can locate our locations closest to the, to the people in need. I do want to tell you that we will be bringing only new equipment in. We will add about 600,000 to 750,000 dollars' worth of payroll to your community. Also, you know, it's, it's very important for us to look at that statistical information prior to making that assessment where we are. We tend to get our, the 911 information, do a PIN study, and then reach out to find the best location for Poplar Bluff.
I guess I question, how are you going to add 650,000?
We will be...
To, to the community?
We will start out with two ALS units, with working one on, two off, or two on, four off, which will add, we'll have probably about 30 full-time personnel working for us. We have a very competitive EMS package. Our paramedics with health insurance and 401K, they're up around 60,000 a year, and our EMTs are very competitive in the marketplace. We will also bring our education up here. We will educate our, our own as, as well as your community through our training center, through the Arkansas, the American Heart Association. We, we will also, to facilitate our other locations in Missouri, our other six locations, what we're, what we're looking to do is have a facility up here and do our onsite mechanic work for all of our Missouri market. So we're not taking our, our maintenance out of Jonesboro, Arkansas. So we're going to kind of split it up and add that addition here. So now that will be only on our equipment. We will not be, we won't be working on any citizens', you know, cars and such.
I guess my point is, you're not really adding to the community, you're, you're shifting it around. Are you, is your corporation in Missouri?
We're at Arkansas Corporation, but we do, we are, we handle Dunkland County and Pembacote. We have seven bases, seven locations in Missouri at this time.
Are you registered with the Secretary of State's office in Missouri, or?
Yes.
Okay. How is it registered? Do you know, under Medic One?
Medic One LLC.
Why'd you choose Poplar Bluff? Is there a reason?
Well, when we look to expand our, when we look to expand our footprint, we look at, you know, we, we want to have our counties touching from a mutual aid perspective in case of a natural disaster or a serious, serious situation in your community. We are able to, we have all of our vehicles on vehicle locators in our dispatch center, and we are able to see all of them on both states. So if there is a natural disaster here, I, I feel very confident we could have more ALS units in your community within an hour than any, any surrounding services. We have, you know, multiple backups in all our locations. All of our equipment is stocked and ready to go. It's all properly licensed. And I feel like we will, with this, I want to tell you, we're not going to be asking for subsidy. We're not asking for anything. We're just asking to do business in your community. So what it will do is, what I'm asking for your blessing, you will have two more ALS units in your community, hopefully, starting around mid-April, upon your approval.
What about community service, like the public county fair sometimes asks for ambulance service, you know, for certain things, schools, things like that?
Yes, we handle, we, we do, we're, we're very, very being, being a corporate citizen. We'll engrave ourselves in your community. We will handle football games if we're asked at double charge. We will do blood pressure clinics, school events. We like to do a program through our elementary programs to get small children comfortable with the back of the ambulances in case they're ever in there, because they're very intimidating and scary, and it can improve their care. We, we do fairs. I think if, if you were to reach out to our, to the other committees you're in, you'd, you'd see that we, we market very, very well. We also have an app that we'll be rolling out in your community. So, so it would, it'll be a little more, we'll be, we'll be able to inform your community a little quicker.
Thank you.
Did you say you're bringing two units? You're bringing a maintenance?
Yes, what we're going to do is, we're going to bring two brand-new ALS units with most likely one to two backups. We would like to get in a facility big enough that we can maintain. We were, we're going to hire, hire a mechanic from this area that we can handle all of our Missouri, Missouri maintenance through this location here in Poplar Bluff. From a dispatching perspective, upon your blessing, what we would probably like to do is talk to your local agencies and, you know, where we can get our, our dispatching done locally here. We do dispatch out of our, of our corporate, our corporate location out of Jonesboro, Arkansas. But I really, I really feel like here in Poplar Bluff, we would like to outsource that to our, to a current department you already have. And obviously, paying a competitive fee for doing that.
Comments or questions from the audience?
I had one question. You said this was your first step. Could you kind of take the council through the steps that you have to go through in order to actually provide ambulance service?
Yeah, well, we need to have the, you know, y'all's vote and blessing for this endorsement. And then what we do is, we already currently licensed the state in Missouri, so it would go pretty quickly. But the next thing, it goes to Jefferson City. And then what we'll do is reach out and get our Medicare, Medicaid licenses and get our location. And we really feel like probably mid-April, we'll be able to begin servicing your community.
So this would be the only step that you would come before city council?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this item until the 21st to get some more information. We've got two other ambulance services in town, and they're, they're currently dispatched through our police department on a opposite day type of thing. And I know we ran into a problem before with the wrecker services when we get extras in, you know, like trying to keep the work and the cause equal on a rotating basis. And with this type of service, you know, if it takes them a couple of extra minutes to figure out whose turn it is, that two minutes could be a life-threatening event in certain circumstances. I'd like to get some information from the police department if they see any problem with the third, how they would handle the third ambulance dispatching and dividing, you know, the time up, just for the safety of our citizens. So my motion would be to table this until the 21st, till we can get some more information.
I'd second that.
The motion has been made and seconded to table item E until the 21st. Mr. Scott? Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Item F, the city council will review an amendment to the 20,000, 2015 fiscal year budget related to the police department. Mr. Massingham.
It should actually be the 2016 budget, but, no, it does say 2015, but I meant 2016. We had three police cars or patrol vehicles budgeted this year to purchase for the police department. The last few years, I think we've been doing four a year. I was just trying to watch our capital money. Police department came to me and asked if they could purchase one other car and use some of the Cape Porter funds. They're able to use the interest off the Cape Porter funds for equipment, which the last few years, we've been doing that. It's actually never been brought to council, and I felt like since that's city funds, it really should be at the discretion of the city council and how that money's spent. So we're asking for a budget adjustment to use the Cape Porter funds to buy an additional police car. And if you have any questions about the vehicles, the equipment that goes on them, Captain McLean's here from the police department to answer any questions. It's approximately $32,000, I think.
But Cape Porter fund, that's for emergency equipment. We've got one for the fire department and one for the police department?
Yes, sir.
Is this an additional to the ones we're buying?
Yes, it'd be an additional to the three we're purchasing.
You know what type of vehicles we're going to buy?
Uh, they're actually going to be the new, Ford has a new Interceptor Explorer. If you'll notice, a lot of the newer highway patrol vehicles are the Interceptor Explorers. They're a little more practical, there's more room in them. With all the computer equipment now and guns and the patrol cars, they're really cramped for space in those. So a lot of highway patrol, a lot of the different departments are moving up to the different vehicles.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Captain Mike McLean with the police department. And as Mr. Massingham stated, I'm here to answer any questions, hopefully answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
My, my main concern is, we're only into the start of the third month of this budget, and we're already having to make, and we're in a deficit, we're already having to make a budget adjustment. I realize, you know, with this coming out of a different fund, it won't really affect that. But, you know, this council decided that three vehicles was enough for this year. And if, you know, the equipment, like I say, can come out of that, we've got, what, 30,000, I think, in capital for equipment, which is probably, you know, safety-related through the police department. I don't see why we couldn't save that 30,000 in equipment and use that Cape Porter fund to buy that equipment. Cut down on some of our budget deficit.
Is there a need for a fourth?
We have been purchasing four patrol vehicles each year. I've been here 21 years. As long as I can remember, we've received four, and we have been able to manage our fleet with four. The concern is, three this year is going to put us behind, looking like maybe three next year. That's two cars over two years, and we're concerned about our fleet. We have been able to take steps and increase our fleet as far as the equipment and the longevity. the longevity of it, and as, as the administration has discussed at length, we're just concerned. So, we put our heads together and we come up with the idea of using the Cape Porter money to outfit all of the patrol vehicles, which would reduce the amount spent in the capital equipment expenditure this year, which would in turn allow us to buy the fourth car. So, basically, we're using the, those funds to supplement what was already approved, is, is how that came to light, and we, uh, we, as the administration, brought that to Mr. Massingham's attention and made the request.
I think I'm the bad guy here, because this is the first year, we've cut them back to three, so, uh, I was just trying to stretch the capital dollar.
I guess, could you kinda shed some light on, it, it's safe to assume that our department is growing, I mean, with all, everything that's moved into Poplar Bluff, it's had to put more workload on you.
Yes.
You talk about, historically, we've just added, added four. I've kind of the feeling if we reduce that, we're going to be falling behind even more than, I mean, you're talking about just keeping up with what we used to do.
Yes, four, four allows us to maintain our current speed on the highway that we're on. If we're reduced to three and we continue to grow, yes, you are correct. So, again, that's why we have had several meetings as department heads, and how can we combat this without costing the city additional monies? And we have, you know, that fund there, we haven't really tapped into it over the last few years, so it was an idea, which brings us to tonight.
I guess on the flip side of that, with the new computer system and all, you're supposed to be spending more time on the road.
More time equals more miles.
Not coming back, does that not?
Yeah, well.
Does that not offset it? I don't know.
Yeah, we, uh, hopefully, we'll have that data in another six to eight months and, look at that.
On the average, how many patrol cars you got on the road during the day?
Uh, I'd say, on average, seven or eight, somewhere around there is what we've run.
There's approximately fifty-five thousand dollars in, that's earned interest in the, uh, police, Cape Porter Police Fund. Like he said, they haven't used any in several years, so.
And that fund is just to buy equipment? It's not to buy vehicles?
They can, they can use the interest off of the initial funds to, uh, purchase equipment, safety equipment.
And there's fifty-five thousand?
Yes.
In interest on there?
The, the fund can't drop below a million dollars, uh, unless it's used for, uh, the death of a police officer on duty or a permanent disability, something like that, so. But it does say in the agreement, we can use the interest earned for, in both fire and police for equipment, and we actually tapped into it for the fire department's fund several years ago to help purchase fire trucks, so.
Where are they, where are you gonna purchase these at?
Well, we, we have to, uh, we follow state contract, and we make every attempt to get, since the state contract is awarded, of course, through the state and Jefferson City, um, and, for an example, this year, it's not a local business that has it. We reach out to local businesses and basically ask if they will meet or beat state contract pricing. We did just that, um, however, no local company would, so we ended up going with a company out of Columbia who did not receive the state contract, uh, bid this year. However, they were, they sent an advertisement out, uh, agreeing to sell at below state contracts, so there were some savings there. It cost the city a little bit of fuel for me to go to Columbia and meet with the manager and discuss options and, and finalize everything, but pretty good savings overall.
Of course, it's saving money on these.
That is, yep.
Thank you. So, this won't really have a, an effect on the budget?
No, it won't. Like I said, I don't think we've ever brought the Cape Porter funds before the council, uh... I just don't know if that should be one person's discretion on how to spend that. To me, it, I felt like it should be, actually be part of the budget from now on and included in the budget.
Do we need a motion, or you just need a consensus?
I think we need to adopt an ordinance to amend the budget for next, at the next meeting, so.
I'd make a motion, we move this to the 21st.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move item F to the voting session, March 21. Were, were there any comments or questions from the audience? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Moving to the action required items, item AA, bill number seventy-eight eighty-eight. The city council will take action on an ordinance amending the water user fee rate in order to finance Phase Three of the State Revolving Fund Water Improvements Project.
Move for first reading of bill number seven-eight-eight-eight.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading of bill number seventy-eight eighty-eight. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Ms. Laurie?
Madam Mayor, may I ask Councilman DeGerris if he would include in his motion that it be read by caption only?
Yes. I'll amend that motion to include caption only.
An ordinance enacting a water user rate adjustment in order to finance Phase Three of the State Revolving Fund Water Improvements Project.
Move for second reading by caption only?
Second. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for second reading. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance enacting a water user rate adjustment in order to finance Phase Three of the State Revolving Fund Water Improvements Project.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of bill number seventy-eight eighty-eight. Roll call, please.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker? Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Abshire?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-eight eighty-eight has been adopted. BB, bill number seventy-eight eighty-nine. The city council will take action on an ordinance amending the use of the city's water system in order to comply with Phase Three of the State Revolving Fund Water Improvements Project.
Move for first reading of bill number seventy-eight eighty-nine in caption only?
Second.
Motion has been made for first reading and seconded for the first reading of bill number seventy-eight eighty-nine. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance amending the 2008 City of Poplar Bluff Water Use Ordinance in order to comply with the Missouri Revolving Fund.
Move for second reading of bill number seven-eight-eight-nine by caption.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for second reading. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance amending the 2008 City of Poplar Bluff Water Use Ordinance in order to comply with the Missouri State Revolving Fund.
Move for adoption of seventy-eight eighty-nine.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of bill number seventy-eight eighty-nine. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker? Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Abshire?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-eight eighty-nine has been adopted. Item CC, bill number seventy-eight ninety. The city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city and county for the paving of Thomas Street.
Move, move for first reading of bill number seventy-eight ninety in caption only?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading of bill number seventy-eight ninety in caption only. Only, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and Butler County, Missouri, for the paving of a portion of Thomas Street.
Move for first-
Second reading of seventy-eight ninety?
Second.
Caption only?
Motion has been made and seconded for second reading of bill number seventy-eight ninety, caption only. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and Butler County, Missouri, for the paving of a portion of Thomas Street.
Move for adoption, bill number seventy-eight ninety?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of bill, bill number seventy-eight ninety. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker? Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Abshire?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-eight ninety has been adopted. Now, we will move to our city manager's report, Mr. Massingham.
I wanted to let everybody know, they've started working on the Ferris Street Bridge. I think they pretty much have all of it torn out. They have until May 30th to complete that bridge, so hopefully, it will be done by then. Also, Friday, we received our new street sweeper. I think Councilman Johnson actually got to ride in it for ten or fifteen feet, but I think it was out on the road this morning working, and, uh, I haven't had a chance to see it yet, but I know they're excited to have that. The other one was in the shop more than it was on the street. Uh, other than that, I really don't have anything else to report.
And, um, Poplar Bluff's coming up when? Let's give that date again, April the-
April 23rd.
Okay, that's what I thought. April 23rd, let's all keep that in mind. Anything else to come before the council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to ask Mr. Crisman for, uh, I guess more, more or less make the comment of what I consider an alarming comment he made at the Ward Three Count, uh, Town Hall Meeting in these chambers. He asked why the police officers were here at the council chambers, when he was told because of the shooting at Kirkwood. Then, uh, he looked up towards this group of seats and said, "That may not be a bad idea." And then immediately said, "I was just joking." That's not something that we should joke about. The, uh, there was a man that went in Kirkwood, as you all well know, and, uh, two councilmen, a mayor, a utility worker, and two policemen died as a result of that. And, uh, you know, for somebody to say something like that, I think it shows a lot of lack of compassion on all those victims, their families, and the whole city of Kirkwood. And to look up here and say, "That may not be a bad idea," I don't know if he's talking about one person, two, or the whole group, but we've got police officers that are here, and any of those police officers would take a bullet to protect anybody in this council chambers. And I think that's, if not at borders, on the line of a terroristic threat, and I did not appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. DeGerris, first, I would like to apologize if I said anything, but I don't recall saying something like that.
Sir, would you please identify yourself?
I'm sorry, Jim Crisman, 464 North Main. I don't recall saying that, I would like to see the tape on it, but I certainly would, would apologize, that is not my intention. But I do wanna question you on why you bring politics into this meeting. You know I'm a council, uh, candidate for city council. You're trying, you're obviously trying to feed me, and I, I appreciate your openness about it.
Is there anything else to come before the council?
The only other comment, uh, that I've got is about, uh, I'd like to congratulate the Westwood Baptist Girls Basketball Team. They finished as state champions in the Missouri Christian School Athletic Association. They did a fantastic job, and I'd like to send out the city's congratulations to them.
Anything else?
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. This meeting is adjourned.